And with that comment, first, just a little quick comment on the minutes from the last meeting. Those changes have been made. I hope you've had time to look over them, Mr. Pennington.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Because I'll be up for approval tonight.
In a minute, I'll tell you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that'll be up tonight. And with that, basically, under new business tonight, we have two items. Both of them put on the agenda, account for Spivey, and I didn't know if you didn't want to open the discussion on the first item, and Mr. Pennington was kind enough to include a copy of the pavement plan with our packet, so that document is available for people to review.
Wayne, I'm perpetually updating, so...
[laughing]
I don't know what this thing does.
It always like, why did you get the council?
It does. Literally, I just turned it on, and it was fine when I turned it off the other day, but now it's, it needs to update. This is awesome. Anyways, so going off of that, I might pull my, I might pull my phone out, but Saint did a presentation to us. We received a bunch of material that talked about various streets and, and different levels of need and care that was required. And they said, okay, well, you know, we can, we can do all this for X amount of dollars. So spoke with James. We know that there's money in the gas tax that could fund that for at least three years as it is proposed. And then James has also mentioned how, he brought that up to me, about how much money is received in that fund annually, so it seems that this can perpetuate itself for a few years. I do not know how long Saint needs to do what they've proposed in order to, in order to complete all of the streets in Irondale that have been surveyed and recommended for approval, but there was a presentation that was done, and I was basically saying, okay, we need to go ahead and get on that. So it was, you can have this for 150, you can have this for 200K, so that's why I put it out there, is to not exceed 200,000.
Okay. And Mayor, I think you were kind enough to bring a hard copy tonight.
I do have a hard copy, but I think you all have, have that as well. I can respond if...
I think, go ahead. I think the discussion about the 12,000...
So, so they gave two options. Have you all read the plan? Okay. So I don't want to bore you if you read it. Then, as you know, then they gave two options. I think at the request of the council, there was a, what you could do for 150,000 dollars a year, what you could do for 200,000 dollars a year. So the 200,000 dollars a year, then they've mapped out the whole city, you got that in the plan. It's not exactly what I thought. I thought at first that it was the worst street, and then the next worst street, and then the next worst street. That's not how it's laid out in there, that's why I just make sure that you understand what you're, what you're looking at. It is somewhat by worst streets, but it's by worst streets within sections or neighborhoods or communities. I don't know how they're defined. So, for example, if you approve the 200,000 dollar plan, then, then for the first year, if you follow, if you approve it and follow it, for the first year, you will spend just slightly in excess of 12,000 dollars, and what you will get for that 12,000 dollars is crack sealing, sealing cracks on certain, certain section of roads in a certain area. And then the next year, you approve 200,000 dollars. So, so you spend the 12,000, the balance of that carries over to the next year, and you approve 200,000 dollars the next year, and then, without looking at the numbers, whatever the number is, 300,000 dollars then is spent on crack sealing and whatever the next step is. And there's about four different types of treatment that they, that they propose. So, what's important for you to understand is, is when you approve 200,000 dollars, and the next year, 200,000 dollars, you're not getting a lot of streets that are going to look like they're paved. You're getting work done on those streets, but you're not getting resurfacing done on those streets.
Right.
I think that's probably the biggest eye-opener for a lot of folks, because when you talk about street paving or road improvement plan, our minds, this mind does automatically goes to, okay, we're going to have new asphalt down there, and it's going to be in the road. That's not what this plan is. It has parts of that to it, but that's not the whole, whole of the plan. So, I guess, you know, my, my thought is, you all have not had really any discussion on it, and you need to, by yourself, it seemed like you would want to have a deeper understanding, or maybe you already all understand it. I don't know. I'll confess that I've not read all the plan. I think I understand the basics of it, but I don't, I don't understand a lot of it at this point. Frank, can be a resource to you, if you choose to, you know, have a work session or something, if you want to dig deeper into it, make sure you can understand what's going on, and what's happening, and what you're getting for the money that you're, you're allocating. I will say, in addition to, road improvement plan is not the only thing that the gas tax funds are used for, to this point, must have, has not been used for. I had in the interim here, Frank has been working on some quotes, has been working on some quotes for some equipment that's needed in public works that relates to the streets, and we're going to bring a proposal to you all at some point. It's not, not urgent that we do that today or next meeting. One of those was I had asked him to do research on a leaf truck, because there's been a lot of talk about leaves in the neighborhood, a lot of problems with drains, trees stocked up, where people blowing the leaves, or the leaves just blowing naturally into the storm drains. And so he's working on that, a street sweeper as well. Those are two items of equipment that are rather expensive, but can be paid for out of the gas tax. I think there's enough to do both. I'm not, I'm not saying it's either or, but I, I do want you to understand that the gas tax is not only used for sealing cracks and putting asphalt down. There are other things that we have historically utilized those funds for. James could elaborate on some of those uses, if you, if you have questions on that, but I just wanted to let you know that we've heard from you all and from residents about the issue with leaves, and think that that may be something that serves the residents well. We used to have a leaf truck. It used to be very active. It hasn't been active in a while. Used it minimally around this area here, not even at all this year, but last year a little bit, but it's just worn out. I know when I used to live in the neighborhood here in Irondale, that I had a lot of trees in my yard, but currently, right now, I have no trees in my yard, so leaves, leaves are not an issue for me personally, but I know the neighborhood where I moved from has tons of leaves, and I recall, you know, being able to get those to the street, and the city's truck would come by and pick those up and haul them off. And that's a big help. I can't imagine bagging all those leaves that were at my house where I used to live. But anyway, that's diverting from the, from the road improvement plan, but that's kind of what I see just as a big overall summary for this discussion of street improvement plan and use of gas tax and what services we can best render to the residents. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, if you've got any specific questions.
I'm still waiting to pull this thing up, because I had identified a few things in there I wanted to talk about, but, yeah.
Well, Mayor...
No, please.
I have a problem understanding this map and what they're specifically roads, what roads are going to get specific treatment, because they're not named any other. I've got one road that I hear from on a frequent basis in District Four, where that's a squeaky wheel in District Four, he's fixing quick. And then also included in the map looks like the roads that the county has said they're taking back, Overton, Grant Smith, Ruffner, 16th Street, and those look like they're included in the repairs as well. But it doesn't tell, I don't understand which streets are getting what specific work in the map. I see what streets are on the list, and, but I don't know which ones are getting what specific done to them, and I'd like to know, you know, what's going on and where is it going to happen. It wasn't clear as to, from this map and the list of streets, is, you know, that I could tell from this map what specific roads are getting what specific work.
Yeah, I think, Chair, I can respond to a couple of those things. You're exactly right. There are some county roads that are on here. That's because when they were doing this study, the county had not committed to accepting those roads. If you recall, we did that just in the last year or so, that the county accepted those. So, so some of these will be pulled out. So, I mean, some of these are not our responsibility. Overton Road, Ruffner, 16th Street, Grant Smith, I think, whichever one is the county agreeing, and I agree with that. So, those, this was done before they had that information.
The presentation was done to the council December 5th, 2017.
Yeah.
That's when Matt came and went through the executive summary that's in the book, and then everybody was going to get a copy of the book, but it was a year ago when he brought that proposal to the council to show you what came out of the grant that we had to be able to put a pavement management plan in place.
And somewhere after that's when the county and the city...
Yes, you all agreed to the road agreement six months, seven months after that, so...
That's why you see those county roads still on.
Okay, well, still, I'm, I'm looking at green stripes, and I'm looking at purple, and I don't know what streets they are. I've got one in particular, and I said, it's a quicker wheel. I hear about quite often. What, what's going to happen to it? And it's listed as the third, on the third year. That's, you know, if it's going to get repaired, I'd like it moved over to the, to the first year.
Yeah, well, see, that, and that's, that's discussions you all going to have, are you going to follow the plan, or are you going to listen to the squeaky wheel, you know, and, and that's, that's, that's...
That's...
That's, one of the benefits of having a plan is you don't have 12,000 people telling you what's going to be worked.
One, one of the reasons, Mayor and Council, we went to the pavement management plan, because one of the biggest issues was that what we were trying to take out of it is each councilor screaming that their district was more, the most important district. We said, let's bring in somebody that has an independent expertise to just look at the city as a whole, not to look at it based on a district, personality, council, citizens screaming about their road need to be paved. But we wanted to bring somebody in that was, I guess you could say, didn't have anything tied to it other than they knew how to evaluate roads. So that's what they did. They went out, if you read your executive summary, you will see that there's a formula in the front. They tell you how they determine the roads, what were the grades for the roads, what was the status of all of the roads in the city of Irondale. They put all of that together in the executive summary, and then when I sent you that information, I went and pulled the plan that was actually a 12-year plan to show you what streets, what, some of them would be overlay, some of them would be rehabilitation, and some of them would be pavement. So that's why I tried to send everybody that information, so you could see an overview of the total plan for the city, and not just to be able to isolate it down to your district and to want your districts to be the first ones to have their roads rehabilitated, resurfaced, or to be able to do the crackling and some of the other stuff. So that was the intent behind the whole management plan.
And, and quite honestly, that is the genius behind it, is, is that you take out that, that factor, and, and this actually was approved by the previous council, this plan and the study. So we sort of, you know, at least three of you were, were a part of that discussion, and I think agreed that, hey, that will be helpful for us to have someone independent evaluate the roads, as the city clerk has said, evaluate the roads, and then either accept the plan or don't accept the plan, but I don't think, you know, if you start moving the pieces around, then you don't have a plan. You either accept it or don't accept it, and then go from there. But, I mean, that's your, you all's call. I do think, I do think based off your comments there and others, that you do need to have a deeper discussion, and that's, that's my opinion, because it is, if you just get this stack of paper and you open it up, it, it's not the easiest thing to follow, because it's got colors, and it's got symbols, and it's got pictures of what different types of, of repair is, and you've got to take that, and so, okay, well, this is going to happen in this section, but if I want to know what it is, crack sealing, this is the type of work, what it looks like, you know, if it's got gatorings, those big cracks, then this is what's going to happen with that. And it's, it's, you know, it's not going to be a...
Suffice to say, though, in the first two years of the plan, there's no actual overlay being done, where they're putting down what I would call solid asphalt.
I think that's right. I'd have to look at the, the year six.
Yeah, it starts, I think, at least five years after, James thinks it's six, so it's before they ever start doing any, or, before they recommend doing anything other than the other, because you're still going to have to do that in some cases before you can do overlay.
My throat's killing me, I'm sorry, guys. In the six-year crack sealing cycle, there is a year one, it says specifically what streets are, are concerned in that year. Now, granted, you do, there is a lot of cross-referencing on this map that you have to do, but the, the definition of the color codings are on the first couple of pages. So, I mean, like I said, you have to cross-reference the street mentioned with the map to see what color it is, and then you have to go down a couple of pages, and you have to understand that, okay, they've laid out the type of work that goes with the assigned colors.
The map on page 14 shows which streets by year are going to be hit. And I assume that's the same list that we got where the streets are named, but I'm not sure which one of these is, is going to hit 100, 150,000 a year or 200,000 a year, or does that cover both?
I would say, if, in order for more comfortability, since we don't have anybody from Saint here with us tonight, that if I'm comfortable tailing this until the next meeting, where we can have someone from Saint to kind of help us through this.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you need to have him come back, and I think you need to have Frank there. Just as an example, the crack sealing is, is a fixed rate, 12,000, sub over 5,000 dollars every year, and that's just going to be, you know, it's going to be...
Yeah, I get that.
This year, and this neighborhood next year, and this neighborhood next year, for 12 years, is the way they plan. Then somebody'd ask, how long? That's, that's how long this is laid out for, is 12 years. And then starting with year two, it's going to be crack sealing plus, whichever neighborhood is outlined on there, whatever the next step is, chip seal, or whatever, whatever they call it. It's going to be that next step. But you don't get into any asphalt, I think, until year three, just, and maybe that's not even asphalt, that's, I think it's the tar base with the gravel on it, I'm fixing. And somewhere around year six or seven, I think there's a little bit of, of asphalt that starts going in. It's mostly preventative, is, is to try to get on a regular schedule so that you're not having to resurface roads over the long haul. That's, that's why they're doing crack sealing every year, is to make them last longer, help them endure. But I, I agree, I think you do need to get those folks in.
Do we feel like we can do that in pre-council the next time, or do we need to have a work session?
I think we can probably do that in pre-council. I would, I would like to say that as long as we just, if anybody needs the material, we need to go ahead and get it out there now. So, you know, maybe just want to go ahead and do a blank email and just send out every single thing that's...
The whole book?
Yeah, they, just to get it all out there, the entire thing, just to make sure that everybody has everything, so that we can be...
Are we talking about additional pages, or additional...
Oh, yeah. How big was the book?
The bear got it over there. It's not a hundred.
Yeah, just go ahead and get it out.
No.
I tried, that's why I just tried to send you the executive summary. I didn't think...
But if you send it by email, you send it by email, make them know what they want.
Yes.
That way everybody has everything and...
I'll send it.
Prepared to talk.
Tomorrow, we'll send it tomorrow.
Okay.
Council London, no comment at this point? Anything you'd like to see?
No, I'll, I'll agree with Mayor. The, I thought in the discussion we had years ago, that the major damage street was going to be first.
Right.
You know, that's what I...
Sticking to plan.
Yeah, that was my concern, is that the most major damage street that was going to be done.
So if we have a presentation, and we have, for example, Darryl and Frank here, or whoever, if it's just Frank, would they basically be addressing what we would need to do in the year that we're voting for, so the remainder of 2019?
Well, I think they can do that. I think they can, should be able to respond to really any questions throughout the plan.
But we would basically, if we did anything, I'm assuming we would vote to fund a year at a time, or are we going to fund ahead of, like I say, we keep getting carryover, if we just...
I think that's all we can do. I think...
If we want to fund it one year at a time, that's fine. I think it, I think it shows a, a lack of commitment, to be totally honest. I think that, okay, next year if we are, if we're, I think we need to commit to the plan in, in one fashion or another, because next year we could be like, oh, well, this isn't working out, or we're not, we're emotionally the feedback is not. We can say this is how it's going to work, but then people are going to say, well, you're not getting my street, or whatever, and we're going to get all hot and bothered, and we're going to want to change something, you know, midway through. I think we need to, I, I think all we're going to do is probably do a year, but I don't think we should do just a year.
Another approach might be to do it for the remainder of our terms.
And I should live with that.
That's, just a thought, because it's, it's obvious we don't need to go too far out, because there may be a whole change in...
Well, I mean, that council can, can kill it if they want to.
But I think the main thing here is sticking to the plan.
Right.
And I heard that when y'all approved the thing in 2017, you know, over and over again, the plan is sweeping, and where we don't get partial streets paved like we have in some cases in the past, because it was done by funding in one district and certain person having so much fun, so they tried to cover a couple of people instead of covering one person well, they covered a couple of people halfway.
Good question. Who's, who's doing the work?
That would be us doing it all.
That's one of the reasons why they grouped it the way they did, is for cost efficiency. I mean, if you're going to mobilize and do this, then when you're putting it out for bid to do this, I don't know who would do the, any work that we can do as a city will do. I don't know if we can do the crack sealing or not, but we won't be able to do the paving and all, but we don't have it.
So would that cost go up, if that's the case?
It could theoretically.
Yeah, you're saying that we, we can do some of the work, but, and, we don't know who's doing the work right now, I guess. We don't know what, had been bid out anything. So if this prices could go up, from what, from what you have?
Could go up, could go down. I mean, the price of asphalt is, is tied to, to oil, you know, so when this was done, gasoline was $3 a gallon, or $2.75 a gallon. Right now, it's down. So the price might be down now, but maybe up next year, you know, just, that's why you can't, I mean, you can only budget for the year you're in, really. And you get bids on it for the work that needs to be done, and then that comes back to you all. If it's, if it's way under, then maybe you say, hey, we can do more than this. If it's way over, then you say, well, maybe it's going to take us 15 years instead of 12 years to do it.
I trust Saint in regards to the, the manner in which they've laid it out. And they said, okay, this is, this is, we've got to handle the preventative stuff, because if we don't take care of our PMs, and we just start focusing on spending a lot of money on, on laying asphalt on really bad roads, some of the existing roads that are in the process of currently deteriorating are going to cost more money to fix in five to six years. So we do our PMs first to make sure that, that everything is, is, we take care of, we take care of what we can now, so that it doesn't continue to deteriorate without skipping it, I guess. Does that make sense? So, I mean, I trust the plan that they have outlined, and the priority that they was, you know, assessed with it. I guess that's mine.
Mayor, you feel comfortable, Mr. Pennington, could address anything and give us about...
Well, I, I think we get the guy, I forget his name.
Matt Stute.
Matt, yeah. I think we, we get Matt from Saint here as well.
Okay.
Frank certainly contributed. And I think you're right, David, on the, the preventative maintenance, but it's not just first. It's first and continually.
Absolutely.
Continually to maintain it. So where you're going to really recognize, which, you know, may not be relevant to most of us here, is by the time you get to year 12, then whoever's making the decision on the next 12 years ought to be in a lot better shape than we are today.
Okay.
So we'll address that when we approve the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
But as of now, I guess I'm saying to go ahead and...
And get the full plan out? That's okay, Mr. Pennington?
Right. But I would like to see it on the next meeting.
And that's, that's fine. You can coordinate with us, and pick that up. And just basically in the same format as it is now, for the next agenda, it'd be table, we'd carry it over in the same format, same amount, et cetera, till we have the indoctrination at the 5:30 meeting.
Indeed.
Okay.
And I would like to add, the, the reason that the four and five cent fund was chosen, number one, it has the most money, and number two, as the mayor stated, the, the leaf machine that Frank wants to purchase can only be purchased out of seven. So that's why we didn't touch seven. It's coming out of five to be able to still leave funding there for some of the things pertaining to leaf and equipment that, you really have to kind of read through the Attorney General's opinions for this, and it kind of identifies what you can and what you can't do out of, out of four, five, and seven. So when we chose four, five, and seven, it was with me having a discussion with Frank to see how does this play out for you moving forward, if money was taken from this particular fund for that reason.
Also, Mayor, if you don't mind, have Frank come back with something on the leaf machine. He's got, well, several, I'm guessing, yeah.
You're saying the leaves would come out of seven?
Would come out of seven.
And that's one reason I know, because I know when me and you talked about it, you had mentioned those, these particular two gas funds could really only be used for street improvements. So I don't feel like I was stepping on anybody's toes or anything like that.
Well, they, they kind of overlap and interlap when it comes to road rehabilitation, repairs. I mean, you can, some of it you can take, and it's, one, you can do a storm drain out of it. If it's affecting the road, one of them you can't.
Yeah, we'd use some of the four and fives that we use for road repairs.
Right.
Like what he's talking about there. So, I mean, again, that, important for you to keep in mind, because if we've enabled them to have to use that to do those road repairs, you're still going to have those road repairs forwards and, and stuff like that. So you want to make sure that you allow them out there to continue doing, and I don't know what that number is, but continue doing what we've been doing, or budget it somewhere else.
Mr. Spivey, you're up again.
Okay. So Resolution 2019 R2 authorizes Mary to contract Ron Bishop to videotape the city council meetings for a dollar. The dollar was the consideration for the contract. Me and Leslie have, and talked back and forth a little bit about this, because I want to make sure that it was, it was good for her. We've gone back and forth. I've communicated some of that back and forth to Ron, you know, so I believe we've, we've got a plan as far as that goes. It was the, let me pull it up specifically. There was some indemnification language in there that was a little overbuilt, so Ron has agreed to, to cut that out, assuming that everybody has received the, the contract and had a chance to read it. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Ron is offering to do this for the city for, for a modest price. In, in there, there are some commitments around the time in which he's allowed to get that through the city, which is, I, I think is important. He's self-confessed, there's some accountability there, which is helpful. That's pretty much the bones of it.
Questions from council members. Council London, anything about, Mayor, any comments?
And Ron, you're, what you, I believe what you said in the contract is this video, when it's done, it becomes city property, because you were hired to do that job, right?
That's right.
This is not a videotape that you're allowing the city to put on their site. This is our property as a city.
That's correct.
So it's, I guess, about as official as it can get?
Yes. And if you look at the contract under the copyright, or what was it called? Ownership of intellectual property. City owns these videos at this point. Per the contract, I'll give them to the city clerk two days after the, I have up to two days to get, get them to the city clerk. From there, the city can use them for whatever process they want. Promotions, fire and police departments can pull out certain sections of it, you know, for their promotions, for ceremonies they've had, swearing ends, awards, things like that, whatever. The city owns these videos. The city owns these videos at this point, and it is their official record. James can use them to go back over for the notes, uh, the, the minutes of the meetings and whatnot. And so you have full rights to it, it's yours, and you're welcome to.
Thank you.
I, I have no comment on the, on the contract, but I did want to just say thank you for what you, what you've done, just voluntarily doing that task. I found it helpful, sometimes it's helpful for me to go back and review. Did I really say that?
Is the city gonna put this on the city's website?
There is an official city YouTube channel that was created in partnership with the CDA and their Washington at the time. So that's where they go now.
And it links to the website.
Yeah, and, and there's links to it, uh, off the website. So it's, it's real easy for the, for that information to be out there on the main website. This is, this makes me a little more accountable, you know, 'cause a lot of times I get home and say, hi, I don't wanna deal with this. And two weeks later, go, damn, I got a lot of videos that need to process. So this will get them processed in the format that the city can use and, um, to be uploaded to the YouTube sites, I think they put on a link.
Ron, do you retain a copy of this?
I do have a copy of them. Uh, as a contractor, I still have a copy of it, just for working purposes. But the official videos will be the ones that I give to James.
All right, I was just wondering if we could have a, a second point to go to in, in case the city's copy gets lost, whatever.
Yeah, I'll have backups of them.
Okay.
So, and if the city needs, needs another copy of it, I got no problem, you know, giving it to them. Right now I have close to two terabytes worth of video stored, over these past seven years or more.
Any additional comments before we break, Brian, to the regular meeting? Now I will accept the motion, well, I'll make a motion that we close pre-council. I'll give a favor, any opposed? Thank you very much, Mayor. Officially called a meeting to order. Council London?
Present.
Council Spivey?
Present.
Council Bearden?
I'm here.
Me, myself, present. Thank you. And, uh, Council Bearden, would you like to make an attempt on the minutes, since, uh, we have two sets? But it's gonna be your comments at the last.
I'd like to, since each member of the council has received a copy of the minutes from December the fourth and December the eighteenth, uh, request we can spend with the reading of sign, and that they be approved, just submitted.
So both sets up for approval. I second that motion.
Second.
All those in my favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council Spivey?
Yes, sir, I would make, um, I would like to, um, go for the approval of the current bill to repayment in the amount of one hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred, four dollars and four cents.
Now second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, don't see anyone for professional or insulting reports in the audience. And Mayor, that brings you to the floor.
I have no report other than to say Happy New Year to everyone. Happy to see you and look forward to a good year this year.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor.
I do have, I'm sorry, I have one other announcement. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce meeting, I don't think tell us the ski year, I haven't seen it. Uh, is the tenth, um, and I will be giving the state of the city address, which will highlight, uh, some of the positive things that have come around.
And you wanna emphasize from the next town hall meeting?
Yes, I'd be happy for Patricia to make that on the.
And we will, as soon as we have a date.
Don't have the date firm yet.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be near the end of January.
That's what we announced earlier, so just have them pick the exact date. Okay, thank you so much. And I don't see any department heads, all right, thank you. And, uh, standing committees, special committees, no, and we'll go write in reports. I have none for tonight. Uh, Council Bearden?
I have none either.
Council Spivey?
Yes, sir.
Council London?
Happy New Year.
All right, thank you so very much. And, uh, would like to recognize Marty Schwartz, uh, from, um, behalf of the abatement board. Uh, if you wanted to make some comments tonight, please.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, just wanted to give you all an update because I don't know how much information gets transmitted through Mr. Desmond to y'all. Uh, just a little bit of quick history, as some of you are aware, since you're on the committee, things kind of floundered for a long time. Uh, the abatement board had been, uh, dissolved and then was, uh, reconstituted about three years ago. I think David is the people on there originally. But we kind of were mired in a lot of red tape and couldn't get much done. We didn't have a, a permanent city inspector for a lot of that time, uh, due to vacancy and illness and things like that. But we have had some, uh, good invigorated discussions recently with Mr. Desmond, uh, heading the, the charge. I'd just like to give you a brief update on where we stand. Uh, the good thing is, we have not spent any of the city's money today. We're also looking for properties, uh, for those of you who are not familiar, the abatement board looks for distressed properties, and those that can be rehabilitated are rehabilitated, and those that aren't are recommended to be demolished. We're looking for properties in all five council districts. So we're trying to spread it out so people can see that we're actually doing something. But just briefly to catch you up to date, nine twenty Ivywood Road was torn down by the, the owners. Uh, that was several months ago. Just recently, twenty-two oh seven Second Avenue North was demolished by the family. So that was really a cost to the city. We're currently, uh, looking at ten forty-four Heth Lane over in the Roblox Springs area. That's a, a home that burnt to the ground, it's just a shell right now. The family requested a ninety-day extension, which we've granted. And, uh, if they can't follow through to do anything constructive with that, that property will be torn down. Um, seven seventy-five Abigail Lane is a weed abatement and a ten-foot strip was cut by the city to, uh, spruce that up a little bit. Uh, four, four zero three two Shoreborne Road, uh, there's questionably a buyer for that property, so we'll wait to hear about that. Uh, twenty-two sixteen First Avenue North needs to be torn down and we're going through the abatement process, and that process is pretty detailed. It takes notices with certified mail, delivered by a certified individual. And then after that process, they have to, they have to be put in the newspaper. And once that's all done, then we can abate it and, and tear it down. And there's one other property that definitely needs to be demolished, that's thirty-four twenty-seven Seneca Avenue. Uh, and that is in the abatement process right now. We've looked at several other properties around the city, as I mentioned, all five districts, and we'll continue to do so. So if you or your constituents have any properties that they're concerned about, please have them bring it to Mr. Desmond or to myself.
Can we get a list of that, copy of that?
I, I'll have to draw, I'll get to, uh.
Just pick in a box or something like that.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Marty.
Appreciate all your efforts.
Thanks, Marty.
If I might, if I might comment, thank you, Marty, for, um, leading that charge and, uh, it's important, Mark. They deal mostly with structures. Uh, you did hear one, I think, that he mentioned, uh, that was a weed abatement. So there are a lot of others, others that are just handled internally by staff. Uh, uh, Mr. Desmond, who's our inspector, um, on abatement, so in terms of weeds and, and those sorts of things. Uh, there's, uh, Fulmar, I don't know if you have Fulmar on your list?
It's on my list.
They've been working on that for a while. Of course, one back a ways, the, the affectionately named Monkey Park, you know, came through this process as well. So a lot of good things happening there. Thank you all for your, for your work.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. And now would somebody like to try to, uh, David, I guess in this case, it might be appropriate for you to try to get the agenda?
Sure, let's go. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda, um, with item number one under new business being tabled, um, for the next council meeting. And as far as number two goes, I would like to go ahead and move forward with that um, with the, um, with understanding that paragraph number nineteen of the contract be stripping. That is the paragraph that involves the indemnification.
Okay. And with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm making a motion that the, the agenda be approved, just.
Listen, second, you made a motion, basically, so.
Second.
Yeah, you made a motion.
On second, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Thank you. Just a common, uh, question from council, do we need to actually bring one up and table it officially by vote? Or can it be done with that? That's good enough, all right? With that, uh, Mr. Spivey, would you like to move forward with number two?
Yes, sir, I make a motion that Resolution twenty nineteen R O two, uh, authorizes the mayor to contract with Ron Bishop to videotape city council meetings for one dollar.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries.
I'm saying.
Saying?
Yes, I think.
All right. Okay. And do we have any general public comments? All right. With that, anybody willing to step forward?
Make a motion, have we, the jury?
I second that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.